Item number five, this is approval of city council minutes from September seventh, two thousand and twenty one. Hopefully you've had time to review those over the weekend and look them over. We accept a motion to pass.
I peruse those and I make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Have a motion and second roll call.
Gene?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Tim? A- Arthur?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
And citizens comments, if you would like to step up to the podium and make any comments, please give your name, address, and please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Going once, twice, hopes, my apology, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mark Ramsey, twelve eighty Cassia Street, Tawny Town, Arkansas, seven two seven six two. I come before you today to remind you that Halloween is upon us. And we have greatly appreciated the city council's involvement in the past years that we've been able to host Halloween here in the park. So I come before you tonight from the Tawny Town Committee heading up Halloween in the park to request any type of donation that you would like to oblige in. With you, you have a paper showing other ways that you can get involved by donating candy, whatever that looks like, or any involvement that you want in this project to have fun with the kids and celebrate them because that's what it's about. So don't feel like you have to make any decision tonight. I just wanted to put that on your radar that Halloween's coming up and we need all the help we can get and we appreciate. We appreciate you and thank you.
But here, let me be the second person. First person on the council itself tonight.
Yeah, that'll shut them up.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, float some of them things this way.
Well, it didn't sail far enough, save me from going to Dollar General.
That was easy. You thought that might be.
If you come back next week, Mark, I might have forgot this.
Thank you, Mark. We appreciate you guys and all the effort the committee's doing too, by the way.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Last comment, Mr. Downer. I just wanted to say that I appreciate Rhonda's efforts over the last few years. It has been an honor to serve with her on the Halloween Committee. She's been incredible. We miss her this year, but I appreciate her wisdom as we step into this new season and Danielle is crushing it. She's doing a great job and so is everybody else at City Hall. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
On down, number seven, approval of city council members to waive the three reading rule for all ordinances on the agenda.
Motion approved.
And motion and second?
Second.
Roll call.
Amber?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Moving on down to item number eight, old business, there is none. We'll move down to item number nine A. This is approval of a resolution to amend the two thousand and twenty one budget to account for relief funds received presented to the American Rescue Plan, which currently is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Also, we did amend this resolution, Mr. Agman sent it back over today because we also had two other grant funding deals, which was hazardous mitigation grant that we got funding for approximately three hundred thousand dollars, I think. Is that right, Mr. Gales? And then also the fire department received grant funding for the safer grant, I believe. Is that right, Todd? Yeah, the correct answer is yes. Thank you for shaking your head. Appreciate you. So anyway, that was added to this resolution. So would it accept a motion to pass?
Motion.
Uh, the first?
Second.
And the second discussion?
I just appreciate all this coming to fruition.
I do too. Appreciate every one that's worked on these grants and made it possible to help our city. You know, the safer grant is going to be a big boom for the city in helping develop firefighters, you know, when we go forward with trying to create twenty-four seven service. And also the relief that we're getting from the hazardous mitigation grant to help those folks north of town that suffered some serious damages. I think it's going to go a long way to help in their assistance. So I thank them for it. Roll call, please.
Arthur?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Moving down to item number B, this is approval to set back to a, excuse me, to set a public hearing to vacate utility easement at one ninety-three Fontanelle Drive from our planning department. James, would you like to speak a little bit about this? I think Nathan spoke to you about it, didn't he?
I can, yeah, I can tell you a little bit about this. This is the Fontanelle subdivision there at the intersection of four twelve and one twelve. When this subdivision was first platted, sewer was not available in Tawny Town or not in this area. So what they had to do was plan for a septic system in this entire subdivision. Few years later, after it was platted, sewer became available. And they didn't, they didn't actually have to use the septic system on all the lots. They did, however, have a, on this west side, as you can see there, they had a one hundred foot easement for lateral lines. And since those are not being used, someone is purchasing lot number five, they want to be able to utilize that area and are requesting to vacate that, that easement. There is a twenty foot utility easement that will remain along that western boundary.
And would accept a motion to pass?
Make a motion to pass.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and second discussion? Roll call, please.
Amber?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Moving on down to nine C, Mr. Agman?
Counsel, in the recent discussions about the landfill expansion, one of the items that was noted was that there was an error when the, back when the exclusive use landfill district was created. The, and you could see in this new ordinance, there was just a tiny section there that was inadvertently left in and that has to do with the location of the soil bore pits. And that was noted. It was actually an item that had been worked out in planning commission and just to change it carry over to the version that was passed by, by the council. And so this is just a cleanup, if you will, of that particular issue.
Would you like to read the ordinance, please?
Sure will. Or city of Tawny Town, Washington County, Arkansas, an ordinance admitting section one fifty-three zero eight-six exclusive use landfill. Yeah, U L district of the Tawny Town Municipal Code in order to revise landfill regulations for the city of Tawny Town, Arkansas, declare an emergency.
We accept a motion to pass?
Make that motion.
Thank you, sir.
I will second.
Have a motion and a second discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Don?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Emergency clause.
Motion to accept the margins clause.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Amber. Roll call, please.
Don?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Now Penny, will you quit calling about this? Okay, thank you. Sorry, inside joke. I'll tell you later about it. Nine D, Mr. Agman, once again, and Mr. McCartney.
Let Mr. Agman go through this resolution for us.
This is also a fairly straightforward resolution. The Arkansas Municipal League has a sample code of conduct that I think was passed out by Mr. McCartney at the last meeting. And Mr. McCartney asked me to prepare a resolution to adopt the code of conduct and it has to do with conduct in public meetings and conduct with the public. It's sort of a standard best practices for how you engage in governance and, and interact and so forth. So this has been, the similar code has been adopted by a number of cities kind of throughout the, throughout the state. But I think it's a good, good first step and, and something I think would sort of help guide meetings going forward.
Mr. McCartney, would you like to add to that?
No, I appreciate Mr. Agman going through and spending time on this for us. I feel like it's something that probably should have been addressed before now, but definitely something going forward that we need to adhere to. Just to make our meetings a little more professional and hopefully reduce some tensions. That's the only comments I've got.
Motion to approve.
Uh, motion and I have a second.
Second.
Motion and second discussion? Roll call.
Arthur?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Moving on down, comments from Alderman. I'm gonna let Mr. Downer go first since he's been the vacation boy. Maybe he can update us.
Oh, I don't have much. It's do you want everybody to participate in the Halloween in the park? It is a good event and I know Danielle and everybody will carry it on. This is make Rhonda proud. But that's all I got tonight. Thank you.
Mr. McCartney?
I spoke with Danielle a little earlier today and she asked that we as a council gather a either, either costumes or something and, and work in the area with the gazebo. So after our meeting or when council has times, if you time, if you'd like to speak with me, we'll put kind of a game plan together for that and use that area during the Halloween in the park event. Any other comments? I don't have any at the moment, so I will pass on to our next council.
Thank you. Mr. Penzo.
Well, I noticed this morning that somebody was out there with a jackhammer and they was fixing that cupboard on Audemars and Liberty. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Long gone, needed. That's all I got.
Uh, Ms. Amber?
I just want to second everything that Mark said about Halloween in the park. Been working on it, trying to get businesses involved, still need lots of candy. I think it's probably going to be the biggest one we've ever had. Of course, Tawny Town has grown a ton. But I'm also excited about y'all's haunted house that y'all are gonna do. Is this top secret? Not anymore. Well, anyway.
It's not gonna be haunted. It's gonna be the bobblehead house.
No, are y'all still doing your smoky tube and then something a little extra this year? Okay, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Ms. Amber. Uh, Larry?
I just kind of want to reiterate what Donna said. I appreciate Rhonda to no end. She, she did things beyond and beyond and then beyond. So kudos to her. Thanks. Many thanks to her. Hope this Halloween in the park is just as good as the ones in the past. I want to thank the planning commission, Kevin, Rocky and Penny for showing up tonight. Kudos to you guys. And second to art on that bulkhead, as I said earlier, I don't know, I, I called it a bulkhead. I don't know what that concrete thing was. But I helped assist a lady last week that blew out a tire when she hit it. So it's been in dire need of being gone and it is now. So thanks to James, Mr. Colvin, whoever, whoever got it done, thanks. And that's all I've got.
All right, moving on down to myself. Where do I start? I keep making a list and it keeps scrolling, so I better stop writing. Council in your packets, if you looked to the very end, we had discussion at the last Cal meeting. And I think it, I would be remiss in not explaining more about the insurance that I spoke about. What I did was is I, I started doing some research or gathering some research on employee retention. And I was shocked at what it actually costs if you start breaking down, whether it's a corporation or municipality or, or any business. In fact, that if, when you lose an employee, when you look through this packet, it'll demonstrate it to you more and more. There is a cost to that, you know, not that you just lost a valued employee or somebody that had a lot of expertise in a, in a certain realm that they worked in, but the actual cost money wise is from these averages of studies that they've done is anywhere from thirty-five to forty-five thousand to lose an employee, especially somebody that's been with you for quite a while. Probably the cost is even higher. So, you know, I asked that you look over this stuff. It isn't something that I made up or typed up. It is actual brought to us from people that did our salary studies. You know, I called them up and I asked them if they had any information about what the true cost of losing people were. You know, and if you look around our nation's biggest hurt right now, when you drive down any highway in America, what do you see? Help wanted, help wanted, help wanted, help wanted. So it's to me vitally important, you know, that we, we try to take care of the number one asset that the city has, which is our employees. You know, and it's not always about the money for these folks, you know, we try to do what we can to assist them with any way we can to try to help them out to, to get through the struggles of life. But one of the things that is a very simple measure that I'm asking for this council to do is, is looking at the possibility of assisting with some of their family medical costs. You know, currently, uh, over the past several years, our insurance provider has, has done a great job. Matter of fact, we, we actually switched insurance providers about three years ago and we're switching again this year to another new insurance provider. Now, the, the benefits are still the same. It's still Blue Cross Blue Shield. The employees won't have to change who their network providers are or anything like that. But one of the things that this company came up with for me that is different from the past is they're going to allow the employee to choose an option this year. And basically the option is, is that they can take out the standard policy that we've been taking out for the past couple of years with a two thousand dollar deductible. Or they can opt to do a four thousand dollar deductible. If they choose the four thousand dollar deductible, it immediately drops a hundred dollars off the cost of their family coverage if they choose to have family coverage. I believe the current rate on it is somewhere around five hundred or four hundred dollars a month is what family coverage is. I don't have the exact numbers here in front of me. But that drops it down a hundred bucks, you know, twenty-five percent, twenty percent rather, depending on if it's four hundred or five hundred, right? But what I'm asking this council to do is also chip in another two hundred dollars. So thereby it saves them a hundred to two hundred bucks is all the cost and not saves, but it'll cost them a hundred to two hundred dollars for their healthcare for family. Now, currently, what is that effect that it has on the city? Well, when I spoke to you last, I had two employees that were on, that were taking out family coverage. Since then, my assistant decided, actually she didn't decide, she'd been working on trying to set up our kids for her child, which has some special needs. And, and thank God for that program because they did accept her into the program this last week. It has went back and paid for the birth of the child, which is like ten thousand dollars almost. Plus, plus has paid all the medical expenses that she's had up to the date of his birth. So it's very, very good program that, that she's being allowed to be in. So she's opting out of the family coverage portion of this. So to present, we only have one employee right now that is taking out family coverage. So at this time, the cost to the city over a year's period is going to cost like twenty-four hundred bucks. Now, will we have more people opt to get on it if they can save some money? Probably so. Will we have more people get on it as we hire younger people to come in? Probably so. So to sit here and tell you that it's going to be a one and done deal, that's the only cost that you're going to have, I can't tell you that. But for the cost of two hundred bucks versus thirty to forty-five thousand dollars or hired from losing an employee, to me, it's a win for the city too. And it's just one more added benefit that we can offer to our number one asset. So please look this over, add it to your packet for the upcoming Cal meeting for, for more discussion on that because I think it's vitally important that we, that sit up here on this bench try to once again look out for what our number one asset is, which is our employees. And I look every day to try to find something else and something new to try to help them out with because, you know, whether we choose to believe it or not, we are Tawny Town and we are family. And we need to take care of our family. So moving on down to my next item. We're going to have a meeting this next week. We got denied for the park grant this year. I think I know why. As far as the grant application, it was prepared correctly, but they do this on a points scale system and, and obviously there were some other towns that scored higher on points that maybe had some more needs than we had. We didn't really do anything incorrectly on it. Matter of fact, the first time that we filled out this park grant, we didn't get it. The second time we filled it out, we got it. And if you haven't noticed, the shiny new tennis court out there that we're going to be playing on, on the twenty first of this month was that park grant program. So we fully intend to apply for this same park grant next year. Make a few changes. Matter of fact, the new director of the parks grants program is going to be up here next week to help us close out that grant. And we're going to get the opportunity to kind of sow some seeds, if you will. Get in their ear a little bit and maybe we can sprinkle some water on it throughout the year and maybe get another grant next year. So that's a, gonna be a great meeting, I hope. Stoplight. Everybody keeps asking me about the stoplight on Clint's Road. What has been done is when we did the grant, we got it accepted for whatever it was, four hundred and some odd thousand dollars for the stoplight. But as part of that grant, we put in there that we would allow the state to do the on-call services for that. And we have made call after call after call. I've contacted Northwest Regional Planning, Jeff Hawkins and his staff. I burned the phone up on Mr. Philip Taldo, which is the roads commissioner. And asked him why we can't seem to get our stoplight in. Matter of fact, we were told that if we use the state to do this, that would probably go a whole lot faster than us hiring private to do this. So that's what we did on their recommendation. Unfortunately, I don't think that was so. So, but good news is, is our city engineers, James, you may be able to speak to this a little bit, but they have actually worked up an agreement with the state to start doing the on-call program. Do you know anything about that? Okay, well, Garver Engineering has been basically appointed, I believe, to start doing the on-call stuff for the state. So if that be true, my next phone call bright and early in the morning is going to be to Garver Engineering to see if I can now peddle them on the stoplight a little quicker. So anyway, that's where we're at on it. We've been waiting on the state now. Hopefully we'll just be waiting on Garver. And since we spend a whole lot of money with Garver every year, I hope that they jump on this pretty quick if you're listening. So signs, you know, my dear friend Tommy Gerdotta, when he said appears mayor and he said here on the council, his big want or his big push. And Don, I think you can attest to this, was he wanted the signs in Tawny Town to be purple. We managed to get, I think, two signs purple in this town, one over here on the corner and one up here at four twelve and one twelve. Pretty sad. I went into James's office this last week and I don't know what made me think about it. I guess Tommy was thinking about me a little bit, but I sit down in front of James and I said, how are we coming on them purple signs? Well, you know, we hadn't decided this and we hadn't decided that. And I said, well, great. I'm making a decision. So he has reordered signs for these new subdivisions. Is that right, James? That is the correct answer tonight. Thank you. So these new subdivisions that are going in, all their new signs will change from green to purple to assist us in them putting these signs up and helping us get purple signs started in Tawny Town. And hopefully we can keep funding them and putting them little by little across the city to once again give us some branding and some identity to the city is what our hopes are. In case you haven't noticed, Ms. Sandy is still working on fire hydrants. Matter of fact, I think she painted two this week. Also, she told me, she said, you know what's shocking is I painted all these fire hydrants and there's one right across from City Hall that I did not even know was there. So that one will be painted next week, I hope. So we're still on the charge to paint all the hot fire hydrants in Italian flag color. Once again, to help brand the city and get people to notice that you're entering the city of Tawny Town. Next, but not least, what do I have here? Bond issue. Has everybody noticed flags out front of City Hall? What does those flags say? Penny, what do they say? Vote what? Yay, yay, vote October twelfth. Well, guess what? I woke up yesterday morning and I'm listening to the news in my slumber, if you will, and I hear come across the screen from channel forty-two-nine, special election for one percent sales tax. And I said, what did that just say? One percent sales tax. That is not what our citizens are voting on. So if you're listening out there on YouTube, Facebook, or whatever you're tuning into this channel for, what you are voting on coming up is not a one percent sales tax. What you're voting on is a restructuring of current bond that we have, which is offered through a one percent sales tax. It does not have a sunset clause. It was created fifteen to twenty years ago and will continue till the end of time. So there is no sales tax increase associated with this bond. There is no property tax increase associated with this bond issue. What we're simply doing is restructuring this bond and we're going to pay off the current bond, which is like three point two million dollars. And I think it's somewhere around five percent interest. And we're going to refinance that three point two million dollars along with another fourteen million dollars. Because what we're trying to do is build a brand new shiny fire station right back there in the back. We've already purchased the land, the land's paid for. And in case the folks haven't noticed, our good fire department, TAFD and TFD have been operating out of the fifty-year-old building that we keep putting Band-Aids on. Put a brand new roof on it four or five years ago. We've moved central EMS. They actually live in that house twenty-four seven, if you can believe that or not. And with us trying to eventually one day get to be twenty-four seven fire service, it sure would be nice with all these employment lows that we have, that we have this shiny new carrot to dangle in front of all these firefighters that would like to operate inside of a brand new state of the art fire station. So that's one of the issues that you're going to be voting on. But most importantly, if you don't vote on issue number one, then none of it matters. So vote, vote, vote on issue number one, whether you're for or against it. Vote on issue number one because if it doesn't pass, none of the four even matter. Okay, now then, what are we going to do with the rest of the money, you might ask? Well, you know, we have an issue with our ISO. They keep trying to raise my ISO to a five. Now, I don't know anybody out there that knows the difference in our ISOs, but basically if they raise this to a five, there's about ninety percent insurance companies that rate your insurance off of the ISO. What does that mean to you? It can mean a difference between two to four to six to eight hundred dollars a year in your homeowner's insurance. Now, I can't tell you how much it is because I don't know how much your home is insurance for, insured for, or who carries your insurance. I know State Farm is one of the few that does not use ISO. So if you're looking out there, you might look, not that I'm giving an advertisement for State Farm, but they're one of the companies that do not use ISO. So we're trying to improve our water system is why I make mention of that. That's one of the few changes that is very difficult in your ISO to change is one of the criteria is your water pressure and your hydrants and your water flow and on and on and on. Am I right, Todd? Yes, correct answer is yes. Thank you. So we are desperately trying to improve our water. I even know that Mr. Downer earlier this year had some concerns about our water, about especially the water in the center of our town because we have eighteen inch lines on the far end, right? And eighteen inch lines on this end, but right here in the middle, we have eight. So make me understand how you go from eighteen to eight to eighteen. Kind of messes up the water flow just a little bit, don't you think? So one of the things we're trying to do is get that stretch of highway all connected with eighteen inch lines to make it have better flow. And we want to put water lines in other areas that we can service the city better with. Another thing that we're trying to do is add more sewer. You know, we got a brand new school down here. Block and a half away, but yet we have subdivisions that wrap around that school that don't have any sewer. Amazing, isn't it? And as you look at septic systems, you have tired septic systems that are fixing to have to be dug up and tore out. We have areas of the town that desperately need more sewer systems, i.e. the west end of town is desperate in need of sewer system out there. So that's what we're going to try to do with that. Now, I'm not going to sit here and make you think that this is all grand and good because the cost associated with this is, yes, seventeen million dollars. Yes, the interest on this is going to be about seven million dollars if it pays out in two thousand and forty-eight. But if I can remind you what the cost of doing businesses in this town, houses went from a hundred and twenty-seven dollars a foot to a hundred and seventy dollars a foot in one year. So you tell me if I wait or if this city waits to have enough money to put all this infrastructure in and build a new fire department when we have the money? Well, guess what? I have been here for almost seven years and we have been so frugal trying not to spend no money. And we tried to do everything on a shoestring budget and save, 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 that I've only managed to accumulate about four and a half million dollars in our checking accounts. So you tell me how long? So you tell me how long it's gonna take to save up seventeen million. And by that time, what will that cost be to build that fire station or put those sewer lines in or put those water lines in? And may I might add that if we put those sewer lines in, if we can get those water lines in, what does that also do? It helps growth of the city. So the payout on this is twenty forty-eight. That was based on sales tax collections almost last year, not to the current. So the more we take in, the quicker that pays off. So I encourage anybody and everybody that owns a business in Northwest Arkansas or beyond, you need to come to Tony Town. We need your business in Tony Town. Chick-fil-A, shame on you, you should have come on out to Tony Town, cause this is where it's happening. So I challenge all businesses, come check out Tony Town. Cause we are Tony Town. And we're growing. So if you, the council ain't out beating the bushes for me all week and explaining this deal for the need, then I need to hand you some flyers and I need you knocking on doors because I've got my fire department that has been banging on doors all week. They took a list of the last fire department election in two thousand and fifteen and they've been out there knocking on doors explaining this. I've got my staff that I've approved on Wednesday is gonna go out knocking on all the business stores. And oh, by the way, they're gonna hand out this candy sheet for donations for Halloween. So now I need my council's help to get out there and bang on doors. I need my commission's help to get out there and bang on doors. I need this young lady that sits back here in the back, that I don't even know her name, to talk to two of her neighbors this week and explain, go vote. Matter of fact, you can go early, today it started early down in Washington County. And if you don't understand the question or you don't know the reasons why, feel free, call me because I spent all day yesterday doing Zoom interviews after coming back from a fishing trip in which I hadn't shaved, looked terrible. Thank you, Kevin. That was not the correct response. But I was on the phone all day yesterday trying to get the news media out. We're running ads on Chrome Radio all week long about this deal. We've put six flags in front of City Hall. We mailed out two thousand of these flyers. We've handed out by hand over fifteen hundred out of these offices. People of Tony Town, help us to help you, is all I'm asking. Help us to help you. Now, last thing I got, I know I'll get kind of long-winded. By state law, I am required to hand out or present a budget for next year's twenty twenty budget. So if you don't mind, Jean, pass that that way, pass that that way. Pat and I have been working feverishly on this budget for the last month and a half crunching numbers. Uh, matter of fact, um, we had our salary study comparison completed, uh, that we had, uh, Mr. Johansson come in and explain to you guys, so you have the salary information hopefully at home that you can cruise through. Um, but anyway, we have developed a complete budget. This is pretty much the basic that we sent out to you last year, uh, that we went over with you and you approved last year with the changes that we've made for this year. We also put in this, the comparisons from this year to the next year for you. Uh, feel free to look this budget over, I'm gonna ask for you guys to pass this in November, uh, look it over. If you have any questions at all about it, give me a call, give Pat a call, and I would love to sit down with you one-on-one to go line item through line item through line item and explain anything and everything that you wanna talk about, to kind of give you a heads up. Um, and then those of you that I've had a chance to speak with, uh, previously about this, we did utilize the Johansson study. Uh, we did come up with a formulation of how we're implementing those salaries based on the Johansson study, based on years of service, um, going forward. And it's a twenty-year plan. So basically what I'm asking you to pass along with your budget is also this, uh, pay scale, uh, step increase program. So that way I don't have to guess every year on what raises to give. It will be broken down and the employees can see what they're gonna get every year. Also, the only thing that they're not gonna know is whether or not that you guys wanna pass a cost of living increase. So I've told each and every one of those employees, instead of hound dogging me for a raise, to butter up to your favorite city councilman to ask them to pass a CPI raise every year. So, uh, with that said, we also have in the budget, just to give you guys a heads up, uh, adding two additional firefighters, adding two additional police officers, adding three additional to administrative staff and adding two additional to your water department. And by the end of this thing, me and Pat have come up with a balanced budget, which I'm ever so grateful for the work that Pat has put into this. Thank you, and we accept a motion to adjourn. Sorry, you'll have to ask me later, sir.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, I'll have a great evening.